It might not be in the order I usually do it in, but it's fine. We can start, it's fine. I'll just scoot her in. I made a hokey one. I'm trying to height and then I'm gonna make my own little something, so.
Good evening, welcome to Beautiful Day on the Coast Side. We're gonna open up the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
So I can make a correction.
And roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Vice Chair Benjamin.
Here and present.
Chair Holt.
Here.
All Commissioners are present.
Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes. We have minutes from our meeting of April 9, 2019.
I have one typo in there, I think it's on page... Page three, second question regarding the 2,800, it should say further, not farther. So I made a correction on that already, on the final.
Thank you.
I had...
Any other corrections from minutes?
I had one correction. On the fourth page, the last bullet, there's an extra sentence in the comment about impacts are downstream and need to be addressed upstream, that wasn't part of the comments, at least of that, because I think I said the part above that. Separate.
Separate bullet, okay.
Okay, cool.
And through the chair, I was absent for this, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Commissioner Hernandez was absent as well, so that leaves two Commissioners available to make a motion.
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Okay, moving on to our public comment period. This is the time for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards. If anybody wishes to speak, wave your hands. Otherwise, we'll close the public comment period and move into our first public hearing item, an application for a coastal development permit, parking exception use permit, architectural review for 700 Main Street. And we'll turn it over to Jill.
Good evening Chair Holt and Planning Commission. This first item before you tonight is an application to reestablish residential use of an existing building at 700 Main Street. This is Scott Phillips' project, and in our effort to juggle our spring breaks, I am going to cover it on his behalf. The requested entitlements include a coastal development permit, use permit, parking exception, and architectural review. For a little background, originally, the single-family home was built in 1903. There is a detached garage, which is of a similar vintage, and that was confirmed through Sanborn maps. The structure is documented as eligible for local listing as a historic resource, as one of five on the 700 block of Main Street. In 1980, the single-family home was converted to a preschool use, and following that, at some point, a real estate office of some sort. And now before you is an application to reestablish the use of this property to residential. With regards to the site and the surrounding area, the site's about 5,200 square feet. It's located on the southwest corner of Main Street and Correa Street. It's in the commercial downtown zoning district, and the land use designation in your local coastal land use plan is general commercial. There's very little physical change proposed with this project. The site plan indicates the existing primary structure fronting on Main Street with the detached garage fronting on Correa's. The front elevation actually is not including any changes, and you'll note that windows on some of the other facades will be replaced, and that's considered through the building permit stage for historic context. Overall, though, we note that the structure, despite having been used for other purposes, has retained its historic context and has always been of a residential character. Floor plan existing, and you'll see in the proposed floor plan, really, the primary change is the addition of a second bathroom. So the Planning Commission's analysis is focused on what you always look at, your local coastal program, both your land use plan policy, as well as the zoning code, the general plan, and in this case, the downtown specific plan, and of course, also, we make sure that we're considering our California Environmental Quality Act requirements, otherwise we refer to as SEQA. So with the local coastal program, I'm gonna focus right in on the zoning, because it's really where things get more interesting on this project. So this building, with regards to the development standards, both the home and the detached garage, the setbacks are non-conforming. In the commercial downtown zoning district, single-family homes are supposed to conform to the R1 setbacks. Of course, this was built way, way before we had that, well, we weren't even incorporated and didn't have a zoning code like this. So that referral out to the R1 standards is something I'm looking forward to talking to about on another time, because I think it's, I think it's an important factor for the way, in particular, this block looks and feels. With regards to land use, the code specifically requires that you consider a use permit for residential uses in this district. And as we referenced in the staff report, it's unusual, because we're, you are looking at using a house, reestablishing its use as a home. So it, this is exactly what the code tells us we need to do, and we appreciate your feedback about that, and we'll talk about that more later in the Director's Report. Parking is pretty interesting also with this one. With the detached garage, it's only big enough for one car. The requirement for a residence in Half Moon Bay's zoning is a two-car garage per unit, any type of unit in any location. To make findings for a parking exception, they're outlined in quite a bit of detail in your report, your Exhibit A to the draft resolution. We do want to note a couple things. It is possible to conform. This project could meet the two-car garage requirement. It would require demolishing the existing garage, which predates 1911, as shown on the Sanborn map, and it would require construction of a new structure that would probably consume quite a bit of the backyard of this property. That said, the prior commercial use would have required six or seven parking spaces. And so, in fact, it was, it was running in a non-conforming condition, and this nonconformance is significantly less, being one shy. Now, obviously, the location of the garage, it's very, very close to the sidewalk, that's not something that we would normally go for anymore, because in particular, the backing out of the garage space. You'll note the garage itself has a barn door and other historic contexts that staff is suggesting that you consider retaining. We think it's an important component of the development of the site. The location is also in a visual resource area, the old downtown, and those standards emphasize scale and consistency with historic vernacular of old downtown. We believe, because the structure is from old downtown, that it, it's in and of itself doing so. Moving on to the downtown specific plan, we find that, and suggest that the project is consistent with it, it reestablishes the historic residential use of a property, maintaining landscaping and frontage elements reflected of the historic context and downtown setting. In a way, it's an adaptive reuse, which is something that's really valued for historic structures. For SEQA, we've cited an exemption for changes to existing facilities, and in considering that no, no real development of any sort is proposed, we believe that one applies. Now, in summary, just to make sure everyone knows, the site was posted, it was posted several weeks ago, prior to tonight's meeting. We didn't do any story polls, because there's no, no change in the building envelope. The notice was published in the Half Moon Bay Review, per our standard, and notices were mailed to all neighbors within 300 feet of the subject property. We have, as of this afternoon, checked, and we have received no written communication on this proposal. So before you, we would suggest the typical format that you follow, ask staff any clarifying questions. I do want to note that the applicant, Dennis Gould, is here. He's not planning to make a presentation, but he's available to answer questions, should any come up. You do need to hold a public hearing, and then you have your deliberations. And just for reference, staff is recommending approval. The specific recommendation is in your staff report, along with the resolution and the appropriate exhibits, and we are eager to answer your questions or otherwise support you in this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to Planning Commission clarifying questions, and then into a public hearing. If, I don't have any speaker cards, if there is anybody who wishes to speak, there are speaker cards out on the back table, so please feel free to fill those in and put in. So with that, are there any questions of staff clarifying?
The house next door, 712 Main Street, does, does, does that house have, is that house still a residence, residential unit?
You may note the historic resources inventory attachment to your staff report, that there were five houses considered as something of a cluster of particular vernacular, Queen Anne and another revival style. And I can't remember if that one's residential, but the neighbor, the owner is saying yes, and so there's a mix, and they've been kind of phasing between residential and commercial.
And do you know if that property has sufficient parking for two cars?
I am sorry, but I do not, I did not.
Should've asked in advance.
Yes, that would've been fabulous, thank you.
Doesn't appear that it, it does not appear to have it, so.
It's quite likely most single-family homes in the downtown setting have non-conforming parking.
So we already have a precedent of existing housing having non-conforming parking? And we're simply reverting a residence that was converted to an office, back to a residence again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. So, good evening. When I see an application for a building permit, and I have some element of a house I'm working on that is non-conforming, and the thing I want to do is still non-conforming, my understanding is that it's okay if it's less non-conforming. So if the stairs had a terrible rise-run, or something like that, if you improve it, even if it's not up to code, my understanding is you're stepping in the right direction, see what I did. And, and it appears that, so this is really just sort of me understanding the method here, it appears that we may be adopting a similar idiom for thinking about use permits, where we move from a use that's non-conforming in some respect to a use that's less non-conforming. Is there a standard about that, or is this just something we're gonna do if we adopt this?
I'm eager to talk to you about that in the Director's Report and some zoning amendments that we'd like to bring to you this summer. This is covered in the city's, well, let me restate that. Provisions in the zoning code for non-conforming uses do not give you a lot of tools for dealing with this. And as Vice Chair Benjamin described, nonconformances, when we're making changes and reducing the amount of nonconformity, generally, that is favorable. There are some times when it's not, but almost all the time, like in this case, most codes would give you a chance to do this without having to deal with a parking exception. But because we have this change of use, and we have to do a use permit for the use, there is a component of this that is, in a conservative read of your code, looking at it fresh, and that is what I am concerned about in the code, and what we had to put our really gracious applicant through.
Yeah, and I would've assumed that, because you didn't say, "It's okay, they don't need a parking exception, because it's less non-conforming." You said, "You're gonna grant a parking exception if you approve this." So I just sort of, it made me want to generalize, it's not, there's not a gotcha in there. Then, a follow-up, another angle on the parking question, and again, in retrospect, I probably should've asked, but I sort of drove the area a couple of times over the weekend, and it did look to me like there was ample parking, but I wonder if we have asymptotic thinking about, you know, as this area gets redeveloped, are we gonna hit a wall with respect to available parking, or do we have any eyeball thinking about that? Anticipate that question for the second project.
I think it's important to reflect on that relative to your land use plan update, where we're going to be wanting to study parking in the downtown area as a whole over time, and need to address public parking needs relative to private parking, private property parking responsibilities for parking the uses on site. In a mixed-use downtown setting like this, where you really have the benefit of historic structures that have been well-maintained, that comes with it, non-conforming parking. It's just part of the vernacular, it's probably a lot of what people like about old downtowns. They rarely ever meet the parking code. So addressing that in other cities and in their downtowns, we tend to look more at how to, how to bring in public parking supply in maybe a shared-use lot. So for example, a bank that's not open on the weekend could, could open, open up a lot for parking. I've seen parking codes where the use is allowed to provide less parking if they provide shared parking when they're off-hours, and then if they're not going to share their parking, you demand a lot of parking, so there's a carrot and a stick to it. So there's a lot of things that we're gonna be talking about with regards to parking throughout downtown, and we're gonna need to do some new surveys. The last surveys that were done showed plenty of parking on your B-streets and side-streets, so specifically Johnston, Parisma Church, as what I would call your B-streets, and then the side-streets. Of course, Main gets full, of course it does, but you don't have to walk very far to get a spot.
Right. And the, when we saw the renovation of Dr. McKinney's former house, I think it was 792, where that was not historic, that was, I think, cinder block, modern penitentiary or something. But we, when the new place went in, we were pressing for parking, and they had to do an agreement with an adjacent property owner, and I'm thinking that's not feasible, but I have to ask.
That was a unique circumstance that really, I doubt you're going to see again. The adjacent property was under the same ownership, they actually merged the lots. That is now functioning as one property, and we didn't even have to have easements or any kind of agreement. So you, you had a really unique circumstance with that one. But it does represent the notion of having shared parking available on a nearby site where the uses peak at different times, specifically office and residential are really good partners with each other, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for me? Okay, with that, we can open up the public hearing. Are there any public comments that any members of the public wish to make? Seeing now, we're closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the Commission. So should we have any comments or make a motion, or anything along those lines?
The only thing that I'd be concerned about is in the future, if they try to turn the garage into an accessory dwelling unit, I think that might be problematic. That's the only thing I have concern about, otherwise, I think this is a really solid project. I think it's a really solid project, they've done a really good job of trying to protect the historic structure and upgrade it, so that it's more habitable, and, you know, it's providing more housing.
And I was happy with the answers, thank you. And I agree actually completely on this one. You know, I don't have that great sense of historic architecture, and I really appreciate the report that we got, and helping me grasp the significance of the barn. I do think an ADU represents a potential additional level of nonconformity, and I would, I don't think we would've gotten to that when it was a commercial structure. So if there's a way that we can address that in the context of our approval, to respond to the concerns that were raised, I'd like to do that, I'm open for ideas about that.
Okay.
Sorry, the applicant, I think the applicant had a, did you raise your hand, sorry, did you want to speak? Yeah, I thought, okay, sorry, I was stretching.
Commissioner Reddick.
Trying to...
You're green, you're good. Oh, you were.
You're my guest.
Thank you, Jimmy. Yeah. Yeah, I hadn't thought about the ADU question, but that, that is a good, a good insight to come up with at this point. Maybe we want to consider amending the resolution in that direction. Other than that, I think it's, I think it's the, it's a great kind of project to have on Main Street, that, as was pointed out, it's less non-conforming as a residence than as a commercial property, so I don't see any, any reason why I would oppose it.
So, yes, Jill, staff.
So your new ADU ordinance gives you some protections from that, as generous as it is with allowing for parking provisions, because there is no driveway, if the garage was converted to an ADU, parking would need to be, at least one place would need to be replaced. And so there would be some real work that would have to be done on the property for that to happen. So you do have some protections, just the way that your code is. I would be concerned about going past that, because your ADU ordinance conforms to state law, and I want to be careful with that.
That's good guidance, thank you.
Sarah, any comments for me? Okay. Yeah, I think it's a great project, I think it's good to see people living in houses that are downtown, so that's generally a good thing. I agree with staff in terms of any additional restrictions on the ADU. I think, you know, predicting the future, we can't necessarily do, so I wouldn't want to go necessarily above and beyond. If those restrictions are in place, that would address any near-term concerns. So with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move the resolution next in order.
All in favor, or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Animus. Moving on to our second item on the agenda, item 1B, application for coastal development permit, use permit, parking exception, architectural review for 631 Mill Street. And we'll turn that over to Brittany.
Okay, so this application is for a new mixed-use building at 631 Mill Street. I will go through the project presentation, then you'll have an opportunity for clarifying questions before a public comment and Commissioner discussion. The project site is about 5,000 square feet on the corner of Mill Street and Parisma Street in your commercial downtown. And the project's scope includes demolition of the existing single-family residence constructed in 1930, and construction of a new two-story mixed-use commercial office and residential building. The permits requested include a coastal development permit, use permit, architectural review, and a parking exception. Story polls have been put up at the site, as the project includes a proposal for a parking exception, a request for a parking exception. Due to the project's scope and location, the analysis is a little involved, so bear with me as I go through each of these components. So bear with me as I go through each of these components. The proposed building has a neo-traditional design with a residential aesthetic. As the site has double frontages on Mill and Parisma Streets, the building emphasizes the corner with a covered front porch leading to one of the first four office entrances. And the second office space is entered on Parisma with a matching covered porch area. Each office entryway has a deck above it, serving the residential units on the second floor. The residential units are accessed from a staircase on the Mill Street frontage next to the residential garage spaces. The site plan shows the first story floor plan with the two office spaces and two restrooms, a trash and recycling enclosure, and the commercial and residential parking areas. Two EV charging stations are included in the residential garage space. The building is sited at the front of the parcel for pedestrian-friendly street access, screening the parking area behind it with additional landscaping. The project proposes to completely remove and replace the sidewalks fronting both Mill and Parisma, and to be reconstructed to ADA and city standards. The project will also formalize the crosswalks at this corner and restripe the on-street parking spaces on Mill to allow for safe street crossing. The second floor plan shows the two residential units, each two bed and two bath, with outdoor balcony areas and attic storage space. The second story steps in slightly on the northern elevation with high sill windows in consideration of the residential neighbor to the north. Proposed materials include horizontal wood siding, cedar trim and columns, and composition roof shingles with proposed colors of tans and white trim and a burnt sienna roof shingle. The landscaping plan includes a diverse mix of native and drought-tolerant species with planter areas in the parking lot and along the new sidewalks with new strawberry trees and sidewalk tree wells. A new fence along the northern property line is proposed to match the existing fence between the site and the Mill Rose Inn just east of this property, instead of a solid masonry or concrete wall as the zoning code calls for between residential and non-residential uses in the CD district. The site is currently flat and developed with impervious surfaces, and the preliminary grading and drainage plan indicates that site drainage will be sufficiently directed to planter areas. The parking lot will be constructed of pervious concrete as well. The city engineer has reviewed these plans and worked with the applicant directly to confirm that the site drainage is sufficient to move forward with the building permit and to meet city standards. To wrap up the architectural and site design review, the project is well-designed and scaled and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, would positively contribute to the town center with a live-work style building and new street improvements, and utilizes applicable elements of the residential design guidelines such as privacy-conscious windows and sustainable site design. The site is located in the downtown specific plan area. The downtown specific plan guides redevelopment in our town center and has several policies directly applicable to this proposal, including provision of off-street parking, compatibility of mass and scale with surrounding development, encouragement of mixed-use projects with upper-floor residential, and provision of, and maintenance of new street trees. And Steph finds the project consistent with each of these applicable policies of that specific plan. Mixed-use projects in the CD zoning district require a use permit. The planning commission must find for a use permit that the establishment, maintenance, and/or conducting of the use will not be detrimental to the public welfare or the neighborhood. Mixed-use development is consistent with the CD zoning and the pattern of development in the surrounding area. There are several similar examples nearby, including the very comparable mixed-use dentist's office and residential building across the street at 640 Mill. The proposed building provides a live-work opportunity as well as additional downtown residential units, which contributes to the vitality of the town center and supports the city's housing needs. Steph finds that the proposed use and associated street improvements will be a positive contribution to our downtown. For zoning analysis, the CD zoning district does not have any setback floor area or lot coverage requirements. The proposed development is a well-scaled and mass two-story building with 4,280 square feet of floor area at 27 feet tall, where the CD zoning district allows for 36 feet in height. CD zoning also requires landscaping and parking areas and elsewhere on-site as feasible, as well as four short-term bicycle parking spaces, which this project complies with. The parking standards require spaces based on the number of residential units, as well as the size of commercial office use, as our code does not have a mixed-use parking standard. Each dwelling unit requires two garage spaces, and each 250 square feet of office requires one uncovered parking space. So a parking exception is requested, as the project proposes three garage spaces instead of the required four for the two residential units, and four uncovered parking spaces instead of the required five for the 1,300 square feet of office space. In total, seven spaces are proposed where nine would be required. Going back to the site plan, we can see that the parking lot has been designed to accommodate safe pull-in and back-out space, and that includes an ADA-compliant van parking and unloading space, as well as landscaping to meet zoning and drainage requirements. Two long-term bicycle parking spaces are provided next to the garage to supplement the vehicle parking, and on-street parking is available along both street fringes. The live-work design and location in a walkable downtown with access to alternative modes of transportation can support a reduction in the required parking spaces. The residential use will also be able to use the uncovered parking spaces outside of office hours. In addition, although the zoning code lacks specific parking standards for mixed-use projects in the commercial downtown, there are two code sections that allow flexibility in mixed-use projects in the CD zoning district. One allowing the planning commission to modify residential development standards for mixed-use projects as part of any use permit, and the other encouraging dwelling units to be on the upper floors of mixed-use projects with two garage spaces per unit unless otherwise approved by the planning commission. Steph finds the proposed project in conformance with the land use plan, as it is not located next to environmentally sensitive habitat area, or in a visual resource area on a coastal access route, or in an area of known or mapped cultural resources. The existing single-family residence proposed for demolition is over 50 years old, so a historic resource evaluation was required to assess historic significance. The subject site is not listed on the city's historic resource or contributors inventory. The historic resource evaluation found that the site is not eligible for listing in the city's inventory or the California Register, as it does not satisfy all required criteria. The residence is not associated with a historic event or a historic figure, is characterized as a simplified craftsman that does not embody distinctive characteristics of the architectural period, and does not retain historic integrity. Therefore, the evaluation concluded that the existing structures to be demolished are not historically significant under CEQA. So with the determination of no historical significance, the proposed development can be found categorically exempt under CEQA, under sections 15301 and 303. So to conclude, the proposed development is in conformance with the city's local coastal program, has a valid Measure D certificate, and is in support of city council priorities for providing residential units in the town center and fostering a vibrant downtown. The project also supports the housing element by providing one additional unit and then was accounted for. The proposed parking spaces are nearly in conformance with the zoning code and are supplemented by on-street and bicycle parking spaces. The project has been noticed pursuant to the requirements of the LCP, including mailed notices to owners and occupants within 300 feet, a published newspaper ad, and a site posting and storypools on the site. One public comment letter has been received, which Steph responded to in the memo you received last week. We recommend that the planning commission provide the applicant an opportunity to speak and take any public comment. And Steph is supportive of the project as proposed, and the recommended motion is included on this slide.
Thank you very much. Before we get to the applicant's presentation, I'd just like to note, did receive one other written comment from a jury witting. So I can either, I can give that over to Steph, or we haven't seen it yet. So, something in that for the record, and with that, we can turn it over to the applicant for presentation.
Through the chair. I just want to disclose that the architect, Chris Ridgeway, is a friend of mine, and he and I had an informal conversation about this project.
Great. Thank you for that. Should be green and speak right in there, yeah. Got to be solid.
I just don't know what to do about it.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Should I start over?
Please, just introduce yourself.
My name is Chris Ridgeway. I'm the architect on the project. Eddie Bandini, as I was saying before, grew up on the coast, and his family's owned this lot for 40 years. The existing house not only is not historical, but it's in really bad shape. There's rot everywhere you can see. I don't think that there's any way the building could ever be restored without knocking it down. And then if we did try to do it, because the code is so much significantly stronger, we'd have to end up replacing foundations and walls and roofs and everything. There's just nothing left to try to save. So the kind of time has come for his family to figure out what to do with this building. As Brittany mentioned, this is down in the specific plan for the zoning, and it's nice to kind of see downtown Hafun Bay grow a little bit and become a little more vibrant. And I think the addition to offices works out very well. We placed the offices downstairs, and so they'd be ready, accessible from pedestrians walking by. And then we placed the residences upstairs, and we recessed them back so they'd be more private. And so... We are proposing a live-work situation, and I'd like to kind of go over just a little bit of how we kind of got here as a society. Originally, when we had zoning laws, we had factories with noise and pollution, and we wanted to move the homes away from them. And we got a little carried away with it, and as a result, we created these large suburban areas where houses are, and then we put the offices in downtown. And this has led to a whole lot of problems. And so when I was at school at Berkeley, the city planners that I took courses from were big advocates of mixed-use buildings. And one, it's nice for the people to live and work in the same building. It saves them time and effort. It takes cars off the road when you don't commute, and it reduces pollution in that case. When people work during the day and live there at night, they always keep an eye on the neighborhood. They always make sure it's safe, it's clean. If there's any problems, they work it out with the neighbors. In this case, where the owner is not a renter, the owner actually owns the building and lives in the building, then they have all the more invested to try to work with the neighborhood and be part of the neighborhood. And so that's, I think, a good thing. Eddie is planning to live upstairs, and then one of the offices would be for his construction company. We do need a parking exception. The Hafun Bay code is antiquated, and it's, I think that there's a lot of good reasons to grant the parking exception, as the planners have noted and I've just mentioned. The residences do have two bedrooms, but you'll see the bedrooms are actually very small. And so I think it's very possible that you'll have a single person, although living in that, and they might have one less parking space. I know that you received correspondence from the dentist across the street. Offices have a lot less visitors than dentists. I mean, there won't be a lot of, of course, they'll have clients that'll come and go, but it isn't a steady stream all day, and some days there won't be any. So I think that the parking we proposed works out very well. If the parking was paramount in this, the solution would be to make the entire downstairs a parking garage, and then put an office and put a house over the top of that. We have a 36-foot height limit, and that would allow it. Obviously, it would be a much more bigger building and look over the neighbors and have a parking garage downstairs, and we didn't want to go that way. But we do think what we're proposing is reasonable. So in overall, I really wanted to have the building address the corner. Too often, you see buildings where they're facing one street and the other side seems like a side, even though it's on the corner. So putting the entry right on the corner really makes it obvious where to enter the building and addresses both Mill and Parisma Street. There's a kind of inviting porch that comes in there. We hid the parking behind the building, and the trash and the recycling is also hidden at the far point of the building. Overall, of course, we have an extra floor on this, and you only have a one-story here, but there's several things, considerations. First of all, the existing house is about three feet off the ground, and we're going to be dropping the ground floor down to the sidewalk. So it has less mass in that way. We also didn't put the air conditioning and ducts in between the floors, and have to put higher ceilings. And to accommodate them, we're using radiant heating, so that accommodates on the height. We have recessed the second floor back, reducing the mass. Eddie met with a neighbor to the north before Pam bought it, and he was aware of what he was planning to do and hadn't voiced any concerns. I met with the neighbor Pam after that, and of course, we're right next to her house. And we talked about, it certainly does impact her house. Luckily, there's kind of a driveway in her house is recessed back. Since I met with them and I talked to the planners, we increased the distance of the second floor back from the property line to give a little more space. We've really tried to make the house, I mean, the building kind of fit into the landscape. So we have, right between the street and the sidewalk, we have a planting strip. And then between the building and the sidewalk, we have another planting strip. We are planting mature trees or large trees. And so I think that the landscaping will, it's not, will crown the building. As Rick Hernandez mentioned, he was nice enough to come over to my house, and he had some concerns about the downstairs and whether it looked commercial enough. And I have drawn up here, and I can give you now or later an idea. I'll describe it.
Is there any, if I pass out some drawings to the planning staff and the commissioners at this moment, or would you prefer to wait?
That's fine. You can submit to staff, and we'd circulate them around. It's fine. We can just share them. We can just share them.
First of all, I want to thank Rick for his good suggestions and coming before the meeting, so I had a chance to take a look at it and respond to what he was thinking. The existing porch was quite deep. And so what we've done is I pulled out the doors on that porch, and so it's only five foot deep. So it won't be a porch that you can sit on, per se. It'll be where you come in and get out of the rain as you're coming in to the building. When I pulled it out, the wall actually got longer because it wrapped around the corner. You can kind of see in the floor plan. Instead of two doors, I put three doors in. It's the, only the center one swings. And then that gives a more, kind of storefront feel by having more glass. And so it's nice to work with. I think it was a good idea. And so anyhow, that concludes my presentation. I'm sure you'll have questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll turn it over. Are there any questions of staff or of the applicant? Please. Clarifying questions for staff and applicants?
One clarifying question. I just was, it looked in the proposed design, which is on the front page of the designs, that... that the driveway's actually getting narrower, it's not as wide of a driveway as it used to be. Because currently, there's the, the garage right up against the south part of southeast, southwest.
I think you're exactly right, Sarah.
Okay.
We did several things in there that were small. Right now, the parking that's closest to the sidewalk, the stripe doesn't really come out as far as it does, so if you actually park there, then you're in the way of the sidewalk.
Okay.
So we decided to restripe the whole street in that area and move it down, and that made the driveway smaller, as we got the same number of parking spaces in there. And then, we also decided it would be more money to, to replace the sidewalk, but we needed to, it would be terrible to have this cobbled-together sidewalk in front of this building when we're all done. So we replaced the sidewalk.
Great, thank you. Just no questions of staff?
Yeah, just, we did receive a comment from a member of the public.
Yeah.
You have the letter, but we haven't had the benefit of.
I was going to have them read it during the public comment period, please, thank you.
And I did have some other questions about the, the nature of the project as opposed to evaluation. It's market rate, yes? Okay. That with respect to the housing upstairs. And the one-eighth and the one-inch are both non-priority, is that right? The water connections, and that's the water, the way we count water, that's enough for the two offices and the two houses, yes?
That is what CCWD has confirmed, yes.
And the, the, the exception, the language that you cited in the code about live-work, does it provide us guidance on how the spaces that are shared are supposed to be managed? Or is that really something, you know, we want to do it, and we encourage the app, the residence and the office use to kind of work it out, and it's a lesse faire, we don't touch it? Is that right?
I'm not sure what code section you're referring to. Did you mean mixed-use?
Yeah, there was a section that said, you know, we can soften our parking, except, we can make a, a sort of soften our parking requirement in the event of mixed-use, under the theory that the uses that would be consuming parking during the day for the work would be available at night. And I'm just trying to avoid, understand what happens, you know, does it, and I'm not saying this will happen, right? It's all about contingencies, but if we get the residence and the builder, or the, the office uses at loggerheads, you know, they never get, you know, do we have guidance on how we manage that?
Not in the code. It says exactly what, what I read in my presentation, that you have flexibility for approving these parking changes for a mixed-use project under a use permit. So I think you're right to consider what the land use is and how compatible they are. Perhaps we could talk about some signage, so there is some, it's a little more programmatic and.
Okay, and Chris mentioned that the, that, that one of the benefits of this is that we reduce the number of cars on the street. There's no requirement that the office be occupied by the people who live upstairs, right? So, in a perfect world, we get that, but we're not actually conditioning the project in any way on that, right?
Correct, we do have the, the owner planning on living and working there, and the other unit will not be restricted to that, but, but available to it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think, any additional clarifying questions, or we can open up to the public comment?
Okay.
We'll, okay, your microphone, please.
Sorry. So, it, I know that the, there's the comment about how the type of use of this office is not like a, you know, where you have lots, a service, where you have folks showing up for appointments every day. But is there some limitation that, on it being used in that way? I can't imagine it'd be a dentist, it can't be a dentist's office, but.
No, we would need to have that specifically laid out in the proposal, so we could condition it to be certain types of intensities of office, but it is proposed just for general, commercial office.
Sorry, I had, yeah, thank you, I had one more, and that is that we just got these additional sheets. You haven't seen them. Would you like to have some time to look at it before a hipshot? What are your thoughts about that?
Thank you for asking. Yes, we would like to have a break after public forum, so that we can take a look at the plans. It looks like a minor revision, but it's pretty unusual to receive a, a new drawing during the hearing, thank you.
We will, we will certainly do that. I'm going to open it up to Commissioner Hernandez for additional questions.
I noticed in the staff response in your letter, you were addressing one of the specific concerns that was raised about parking in the area. And I also saw the, the, the comment letter that was submitted raises concerns about parking here. And your recommendation would be, that I saw, was to consider re-striping the parking in the area. Could you elaborate on what your thoughts are, and how many more spaces you think you could accommodate if you went through a re-striping project?
Yes. And so I visited the site with our city engineer after receiving these comments and concerns about parking. This leads back to Jimmy's question, Commissioner Benjamin's question about overall holistic downtown parking situations and opportunities for improvement. So the answer from the city engineer was that, yes, they do intend to take a more holistic look at our parking situation in the downtown area and opportunities for improvement. There's no timeline on that, but we did want to note that these parking spaces right here are parallel. All these are perpendicular, there could be room for more parking if they were both angled. The same condition is on the other side of Mill Street as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, I'm going to turn it over to, to public comment period, and we'll open that up. I guess, just to address Commissioner Benjamin, could staff just provide, I guess, a quick summary of just the, the items that are raised in the letter that was submitted? I believe it was just concerns over the historic building. We do have a comment card from the, from the speaker as well, but I just wanted to make sure we're summarizing the letter.
We'll go ahead and summarize it here, and then when, after the public forum, when we take a break, you can read it, it's short.
Thank you.
Acknowledge, it's looking at historic buildings and the concern about not maintaining them. Concern about what grounds parking exemption would be considered, and that the Mill Street parking area is also a concern, and that it's been a problem for years. Thank you.
Yeah, if we can have that letter available during the break. So with that, I'll open up to public comment, and the first speaker card I have is David Maz. Three minutes, speak into the microphone, make sure it's green.
I've, I'm located at 640 Mill Street, directly across the street, and I've been there since nineteen ninety-eight. And I just want to bring a few points to the attention that are concerns of us. One thing that seems to have been missed is at the corner where I'm at, we don't have a water drain there for water when it rains really hard. It's just a bubbler that goes from across the street to our corner, and sometimes our building gets flooded when it rains hard, and the rain goes across the street as well. So some type of mitigation may have to be addressed in that area, at that location. So I want to bring that up, because that hasn't been mentioned at all. I was concerned about parking mitigation, because the building I have is a little over three thousand square feet, and we have five outdoor parking spaces and three indoor garages as well. So we have eight spaces for a little over three thousand square feet, which was required when we brought our plans forward in the year two thousand. So I guess, things have changed a little bit. The other problem we have on Mill Street is that it's a narrower street, it's not as wide. And a lot of times, when two cars try to pass one another, there's not enough room, particularly when the parking is completely full, like it usually is. So it's kind of dangerous sometimes when two cars try to pass each other. Usually one has to stop, and another one has to go through, the way parking is situated right now. And we have problems sometimes if buses come to deliver the elderly for patient care. There's no place for them to turn around, and there's not enough room, so a lot of times, they have to park in our driveway in order to drop off people for dental business there. I, I was, I looked at the plans, and I thought maybe they could possibly move this, I don't know if the stairs have to be in front of the building, we're facing directly at the stairs. We look straight across the street. We, we, our building, we offset it in terms of bringing it back more, instead of being right on the street. And then, our decks, we weren't allowed to put decks directly facing the street. We had to insert the decks and have them face like our parking structure area as well. So those are some of the differences that I noticed between their plans and what was required for us. Then I'm concerned about giving a parking exemption, because parking is already very difficult there, because we have Phil's Tire around the corner, and they have to park their cars on the street quite a bit when they have overflow problems. So a lot of times, we have inadequate parking already. So I don't know how that's going to be mitigated with the new building on the corner as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next speaker card I have is Pam Dor.
Hey, I'm Pam Dor, and I live next door at three forty-four Parisma. And a couple of things, what I heard the staff say was that parking was nearly in compliance. I just want to point out that it's twenty-two percent less parking than is required. The only thing in the commercial downtown area, because we don't regulate FAR, or floor-area ratio, and lot coverage, the only thing that regulates that is parking. When we're giving a parking exemption, or a parking allowance, what we're actually doing is allowing a building that's too big for that parcel. If it's, if it, if we, I mean, there's got to be some other way to look at it. There's no other way to see that, except the building is too big, if you can't fit the parking. Potentially twenty-two percent too big, is what I'm pointing out. The other things that I've noticed, so parking isn't nearly in compliance, it's, it's, they're asking for a lot less than we need. Because the building right now has a commercial tenant that has a very large van parked right in front of the building, and there's no parking stop sign, I, I can't pull out from Parisma onto Mill Street without literally going into the center of the intersection. And I risk every time having an accident, it's really frightening. The other things I just want to point out is that our architect was kind enough to show me the plan, and I graciously took him up and, and actually took a good look at it. There's eight times more windows on the side facing my house than is allowed by law, than is required by law. And we're talking about being very private to give benefit to the neighbor, but it isn't. And I think it's really important to note that. There's actually an extra window in, on sheet, I don't want to run out of time. On sheet A two, point two, Home One, Bedroom Two, has eight times more windows. On Home Two, Bedroom One, has more, and on Bedroom Two, it has more. So I just want to point out, we're not being as private as we could be, and I think there's a little bit more we could do. So those were the main things. I think the other things that were really key were just on sheet A one, point three, that all construction vehicles will be parked on the site, where sheet C two shows that with the porta potty, the debris boxes, and where they're storing materials, there is no parking on the site. So I think those basic things are, are odd. The things I also noticed was that sheet A one, point two shows a telephone pole that's not there, that's going to provide power, that's going to go underground. The east elevation shows that the first-floor eaves touch the property line, but the gutters aren't even shown, so those will extend. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next speaker, Jerry Whiting.
Jerry Whiting, um, three forty, Parisma Street, excuse my voice. I'm going to reinforce what Pam was just going over. For years now, I've gone to the city and tried to get a stop sign on the east and west side of, of Mill Street, and everybody, including staff, agreed with me. They said it was being addressed, and then, of course, we got new staff, and it was tabled and forgotten. I think the real reason, partly, that it was tabled, was that it was very complicated. It's not an easy fix, and we're always talking about parking, and I think we should, we should be talking about parking. But along with the parking is the stop sign. So as Pam was suggesting, how do you, I had a video, in fact, I submitted to the city, of me trying to cross the street, park, stopping on Parisma, and proceeding left, right, or straight ahead. And it was near, nearly impossible without arriving at the middle of the street and then proceeding. So with that in mind, it seems to me you should be addressing the stop sign first, and then figure out what you're going to do about the parking, because all those parking places in front of this commercial building will be going away. Because you, you won't be able to, you won't be, at this point, you wouldn't be able to see around the corner. And as Chris, as, as Dave was saying, the parking, remember, we paid, whatever it was, twelve years ago, we paid quite a bit of money to figure out more parking, and that's what they came up with. So, the parking on Parisma Street is perpendicular and parallel, not, whatever that's called, forty-five degree. So our vehicles, if we park in front of my house, I've had multiple vehicles hit because people pull out and strike our vehicle parked parallel. So this, that kind of parking, whether you gain or not, and we only gained two parking places by having that kind of parking, would be, of course, impossible on that street. I, I would, I would suggest that you go to parallel parking, so you can actually drive down the street. Go try to drive down the street, it's, it's impossible and have two cars pass each other. So, yep, the parking is, is a challenge, and I think this is going to add to it. And of course, commercial use is, adds much more parking during the day than residential. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And the final speaker card I have is Jules Sofler.
Good evening, commissioners, I'd like to speak about parking, too. Kavanaugh, many years ago, wanted to add on to his building on Main Street, and he didn't have any parking to give to the city. And he needed a couple of spaces when he was doing that addition. And he said something which I think we could all think about a little bit, and that is, he said, if the city would build some parking, he would be more than willing to pay for the piece, for the parking spots that he needed to provide. He just didn't have the parking to give. On his building, it just wouldn't have worked. He said something else, he said parking, parking lots on Main Street or any of the other commercial streets were like a jack-o'-lantern, where you cut out some of the teeth. And it doesn't look good, because retail likes retail next to each other. They don't like parking lots next to a retail. And he said, those should all be eliminated, which also made a lot of sense. But he said, parking is necessary, it needs to be provided for. And if the city would take the initiative and build some parking, he would be delighted to pay for the parking spaces that he couldn't give the city. Now, what's being suggested here is to have, looks to me like cars, what, perpendicular? If you start getting a lot of these. If you start getting a lot of these long bed pickups that also have a long cab and you have a couple of them in either direction and you're in a small car parked next to something like that, you won't know whether you can get out or not until you've gone halfway into the road. And it's, it's very, very dangerous. And I would much rather see the city come to terms with this thing and put up a parking lot somewhere and have all of us, I'm, I'm an owner of a commercial building on Parisma also, well, the building is not on Parisma. My parking lot is on Parisma, my building is on Main Street. But I think that whenever somebody comes before you folks and wants to do something where parking is inadequate, you should have some plan where the city can accept money instead of it for putting up parking somewhere in town. Thank you, that's my other comment. It was actually Kavanaugh's comment and I thought it was a very good one at the time.
Thank you and thanks for demonstrating great use of the microphone. So, with that, I'm going to close the, the public hearing there and we can go ahead and take a little break. You wanted to take a look at the plans. So, we're going to call a five-minute break. Okay, we're going to bring it back and reconvene the planning commission meeting. Thank you for entertaining that quick break so we could take a look at some information. The staff reviewed some plans. Planning commission had an opportunity to review the comment letter that was submitted. And Jill, I believe you want to make some comments.
I do. So, the project applicant has come up with a number of proposed changes that could be incorporated into the plans and we'd like to give them a chance to review them with you and just, just list them out. But of course, you don't have the plan in front of you with these changes. And we've had enough public comment tonight about a number of these items that we are going to recommend that you continue this item so that we have a chance to get revised plans. That said, we still would really appreciate the planning commission's discussion. You've heard a lot of public comment, in particular about parking. And we, we would like some more input so that when we work with the applicant on, on changes that may be made, that you're possibly going to support or not, that it'll present, we can work on a few other things as well to be responsive. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So, the applicant would like to present, okay. Mr. Adrey, please.
Okay. All right. I propose that we move out that wall that, into the porch to make it smaller. But if we move it out too far, we're going to end up changing the parking calculations to require more parking. So, we can move it out a foot, but we can't move it out further. So, that's what I'm proposing is those, if you look at the, the corner porch and there's a set of doors that go out, then they'll be moved out a foot and so the porch will be made smaller. And I think I can get three doors in, but anyhow, we'll, we'll see. So, that's what I'm proposing to do there. And then, the other porch that's on the north side would only go out a foot. I know it's difficult, but since we're going to resubmit plans, I think, maybe you could see if you're following me, maybe I can get some idea if you understand what I'm saying. It's hard to draw from the podium.
Yeah, and certainly we'll get a chance to look at the, the revised plans if it does, if we do follow staff's recommendation, but yeah.
But just kind of so you can, so we're, know where we're heading, that I don't say one thing and do another. I'd also like to address the windows on the outside. First of all, I want to thank Pam for, for, it's a difficult situation to have change right next to you, the house that she just bought. And so, when I first met with her, I marked up the plans about suggesting making windows smaller with her. And we actually reflected those changes in the plans you have. So, let me just review that, but there's more that we can do. We had windows on the downstairs office that faced the property line, looking at her, and we took those windows out. We also, when you look at that elevation that's on the north side, we changed all the windows.
Yes, if you just, Commissioner Hernandez.
You're talking about the top of the drawing here is the north side?
Yes, exactly. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I take the pointer? Okay. So, on this wall here.
Still need to speak in the microphone.
Yeah, okay. Let's see if I can chew gum and walk at the same time. So, this wall here we're talking about. First of all, we moved the wall back further partly because of the conversations with the owner and also conversations with Jill and the building department. So, we pushed the wall back a little bit. Not a lot, but we made it three feet, I believe, from the property line. The eve does conform on the, it doesn't stick over the property line. And we'll show that in working drawings that, to show that, or more, put more information. So, on the downstairs, you're looking at the upstairs, but we had some windows on the downstairs and we took those out. Then, maybe we can go back to the slide you had. Yeah, I'm sorry, you were doing a good job going to the downstairs. I, I'll, okay, so this is a solid wall now. We had windows in it before. So, I'm catching up to the staff. Now, if you could go back to the previous image of the upstairs. Thank you very much. Then, this window, we have to solve light and egress for fire, but this window we raised up off the floor and so it's higher up and you'll see it's drawn correctly on the elevation. And we can do that because I can get the light and then elevation. And we can do that because I can get the light and ventilation and fire access to this on here. What we didn't show on this, we showed a regular window here, but I can raise this window up also, just like this window here. And I just talked to Pam, and that looks directly towards your property, and I think that you'd appreciate that. The other windows here, it's a little complicated. We have to meet light and ventilation, which we really have more than light and ventilation by the minimum called by building code, but I also have to meet egress. And so, the windows have to be a certain height and width for the fire department to get in and out of it and for people to get out and be rescued. So, we are probably over the light and ventilation, but I can't reduce it and solve the fire access problem. So, anyhow, those are what we had done before and what I'm proposing to do now.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck. I hope you got that.
Okay. So, with that, we'll bring it back to commission discussion, and I'll start off just with some general comments. I think, one, I do support the staff's recommendation to continue. I think raises a couple of questions that would be good to just be able to take a look at and bring it back. But, in general, you know, I want to say, I think this is, I'm supportive of the use of the site. I appreciate the mixed-use development and adding an additional unit there. I don't have a great deal of heartburn around the parking exception. I think, you know, I think parking, parking is a tricky thing. I think, I do agree with staff's determination that this gets close to where we want to be, but I also don't, I also recognize that there's a larger parking conversation to be had that isn't necessarily the burden of this particular project or this particular site. So, I guess I would ask if, I'm familiar with Mill Street, have ridden my bike down there a number of times with my kids. The sidewalks are a little funky around there, around Mill Rose, and the angled parking does provide some sightline issues. It seems with folks backing up, and it is a narrow street, but it also seems to be, you know, if you just drive slow, things are okay. And I think there's other opportunities in terms of planning or parking within the neighborhood, near the Catholic Church and the other sites. So, I guess, I know we're gonna have a conversation, Jill alluded to it earlier, about, you know, some other possibilities for shared-use parking, some other potential solutions that might be coming up. And I guess maybe when, either before this project comes back or maybe in conjunction with that, if staff could bring back just some ideas or some thoughts or some possibilities for looking at Mill Street and looking at parking in that area, perhaps addressing the need for a stop sign or crosswalks, or maybe there's some opportunities to do some special striping or, you know, something along that roadway that could address some of those questions, and looking if there are other opportunities for either shared-use parking or where there might be adjacent streets where there may be an abundance of parking, whereas there might not necessarily be an abundance of parking right here. So, those are kind of my general comments at this point. And with that, other commissioners?
Yes, thanks, Brian. I support pretty much right on what our chair just went through. I think there are so many positive things about this project in terms of the benefits of live-work development in downtown that there's a lot to like about that. I certainly hope we can move forward quickly on it. I'm sensitive to the parking difficulties down there that the businesses are already suffering through, and I'm a little uneasy about, you know, supporting hypocritical things like exceptions to our policies, but I really feel in my heart that, you know, providing seven spaces instead of nine is awfully close. And there, as I said, there are so many good factors about this that I would be in favor of a parking exception. At the same time, the bigger issues that people have discussed today about Mill Street, I agree again with our chair. It would be, would be great to take a look at that and not, as he said, not to burden this project with that, but it would be good to have that on our agenda at some point.
Commissioner Bogart?
Thank you very much. I, so I have to, I concur with my fellow commissioners that I also am supportive of this, this use of the site, and I do, in addition, kind of what they said, I like how the sighting of the building, the structure, I think that fits with the kind of the downtown feel. I definitely would not want to see, like, trying to go to like three stories to accommodate parking. That doesn't fit in this area. So, I do think that this is a case where I think that a parking exemption, I would be supportive of it. I don't love it. I will say that there is this interim period of where the, there isn't going to be a solution or any, you know, and in that, in the meantime, it may be worthwhile to see if there's any way, since you already have the diagonal parking on Mill Street, if there's an opportunity to fit one more space in. At this point, it's already diagonal parking, but with the reduced driveway, it's worth looking at whether the restriping could fit one additional street spot because you already have that parking. It's not ideal, but in the current situation, it's not gonna make things worse. So, I would, if that's a possibility, it'd be worthwhile looking at that. So, yeah, I'm supportive of it. I like the mixed use, and I like the look and feel of it as well. So, yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez?
So, I wanted to separate my comments into two parts. One, I'm generally in agreement with the comments made by my colleagues. I want to step back and look at architectural review because it's one of the obligations we have with a project like this. The concern I expressed to Mr. Ridgway was the, when you have a mixed-use building, you want to have a concept of something that looks like commercial on the first floor, storefront, something that says the business is here. My concern with the project as originally submitted is it doesn't quite convey that. Some of the other projects we've had before us recently, the design principles get that across to you. When you walk by, you see this is a place of business. It's not somebody's home. And so, that's the concern, the one concern that I have from an architectural review perspective. Otherwise, I think it's a great design. It fits in. The massing works in the neighborhood. It's consistent with a lot of the other structures. I think it fits in. It also, it also fits into the priorities that have been expressed by the current city council, which are, we want to emphasize mixed-use development, more concentrated downtown core, and this really feeds into those revised priorities, which, I know there was an equity issue raised of, I had to do a lot of marketing on my property many years ago. The priorities have changed from the city from, in that time, and we've had a number of projects, including the library, including another project on church and Kelly, that, where we've granted some exceptions to parking in recent years because of the revised priorities from city council. So, we're following the direction of the city council with respect to that. There is a problem with parking on Mill Street, and there's a parking with, a problem with parking on Parisima. Some significant issues have been raised, and I think there's a history of car accidents that have been raised to the public record here, and there have been some requests made for improvement. So, I concur with my colleagues, some of my colleagues' expressed opinions, which is, it would be really good to look at a revised parking plan for this area, for this intersection and that the area is immediately around. I know it's a little beyond the scope of the project, but given that we're asking for variance and it's a commercial project, I think it's an opportunity to do so. In particular, the intersection of Parisima and Mill, if we could look at making some kind of stop signs, four-way stop sign, crosswalks, making it a little safer, things that maybe if you look on Mill Street and Main Street, I think the example of the crosswalks and the little pushouts there, slow the traffic down, can provide some safety for pedestrians, that that might be a model to look at. I just, and I also agree with the, as you're thinking about that, we should think about the long bed pickup trucks because I've almost gotten decked on my bike. I've also had, as you bike down that street, because people can't see you when they're pulling out when you have the longer trucks in that area. So, there's some, and I'm not sure if this fits into this project in particular, but there are things to be concerned with. So, yeah, if we could look at the striping. Again, another issue that was raised is the drainage. I'm not sure this really is part of this project, but there's some flooding issues that happen around this project, and with the rotating dirt to a semi-pervious state, we may compound existing drainage issues. So, it's just an issue that's been raised. I'd like to see maybe the city engineer respond to what the long-term plan is there. I like the idea of indoor parking, but I think that's a much bigger, indoor parking fees, but I think it's a much bigger issue than this particular project. So, but yeah, I generally support the project. I just have some concerns about a comprehensive parking plan.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. So, once again, I am humbled by the expertise at the table and also in the audience. I had the opportunity to meet briefly with the applicant this afternoon. Thank you for the privilege. I appreciate the wise thoughts of our audience tonight and of our, the receptiveness of the applicant and his architect to trying to address the concerns. This is a great example of a project in isolation that is just beautiful to me. I, you know, I appreciated Commissioner Hernandez's observation about the sense of commercial place on the downstairs. I will confess that when I looked at it, I thought, it's a beautiful house. I would love to live in that house, right? And I was like, you want to push, you want to reduce the porch? No, I like the porch. Let's keep the porch. But, I appreciate your insight about it being a business and trying to tell the business story. So, I defer to your wisdom about that. Who thought that I would find a way to talk about drainage on this project?
I never doubted it.
But the, but I do think that, you know, we got some insight that I don't think any of us and probably not staff had, that on the other side of, that is, on the south side of Mill Street, there apparently is some pretty impressive storm drainage issues. If the storm drainage is clear on the east side of that, on the southeast side of that intersection, apparently the water shoots through the culvert and actually creates a small geyser on the southwest side of that intersection. So, A, I'd like to see that because it sounds like fun, but B, it means that we really need to think through our storm drainage very carefully. And if, and once that geyser runs or where, you know, even when it's not a geyser, but it's just bubbling in a nice way, we want to be sure that we understand, as we have often said in the local coastal program update process, that we understand the off-site impacts of onsite changes, and this is an illustration of that. Parking is another illustration of that. I thought Jules, Mr. Sofa, was really compelling. You know, I've never been clipped on my bicycle, but I have had the pleasure of trying to back out a Mini Cooper and not being able to see over the bumper of a nearby truck. The neighbor who pointed out the challenge of maintaining with respect to construction time conditions, the idea that material and parking would be all onsite. I want to be sure that we've done our math, and we know that we're really going to be able to do that. I, you know, I heard her skepticism. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I just want to be sure that we've clearly identified as part of the construction process that as a condition, these are the places that there will be parking. These are the places there's material, and we're not going to further impact the parking as a part of the construction process, if indeed that's what's being claimed here. With respect to the parking exception, I, you know, I, that was the thing that I talked about with the applicant this afternoon that sort of struck me. I wasn't sure how I thought about that, but I could see that there was an issue. And it further crystallized for me during the conversation because we have other situations where we, for example, as you pointed out, at the library and at other places, notably the Mariners Church, where we talked about the ability of dovetailing applications, that there would be a place where a parking space would be available for particular use at a particular time and a different use at a different time. And I realized that in this, in this case, that's not what's proposed. I'm wondering if it should be. I'm wondering if we should be saying that as a commercial matter, we should expect this application to use parking at this time, and at another time, that space should be a priority for the residents. Now, that doesn't mean that we should be ticketing the business car at, you know, six o'clock in the evening, but if the applicant is willing to, requires a condition of the permit, that the residents and the, and the commercial spaces work to really keep their uses onsite, I'm open, I'm open to seeing you accept responsibility for minimizing this impact, as opposed to, it's another impact. What are we gonna do until we have a parking deck or there's autonomous vehicles everywhere? We have to live with this. So, I, you know, we've done it in other cases. Here, the grain is pretty small. You know, we're talking about a relatively small number of parking spaces. So, I get it that it's not easy. I still think it's worth trying. I think it's an exercise in civility that could go along the way to addressing some of the concerns that I'm hearing in the community, and I'm a big fan of that kind of comity moving forward. I also heard concerns about circulation with respect to the changes and the, well, with respect to the existing parking and the widths of the street impacting safety for people when they're backing out. You know, and I'll just put my hand up and say, if I'm ever trying to go from Main Street to Highway One, I never use Kelly. I always use Mill Street because I don't have to have that stop at Parisima. So, mea culpa. I'm one of your, I'm one of your bad guys. And I would belly up to the bar and stop there if there were a stop sign, even if I wasn't gonna get ticketed, because it is the right thing to do. But, I do think that if we were to simply put up a stop sign and think that is the solution, I'm concerned that we are not recognizing the circulation flow in that area. During peak periods, Main Street is practically gridlocked as it is for people looking for parking. And if we introduce additional stops for people on Mill Street, I don't know whether that would impact the flow in this area, but I can't think it would help it, and I just want to be sure we've thought it through. You know, not that we shouldn't have a stop sign there. I think it's a wise idea, but I want to be sure we understand what its ramifications are for backflow of circulation. And here's a radical idea with respect to that. You know, it would be a lot wider if it were one-way. It would be more predictable. You'd know where to look if Mill Street were one-way. And, you know, we were talking about that, just looking at the picture, you know, and I, as our Public Works Director, John Doughty, is fond of saying, everybody's a traffic engineer. So, I'm not, I'm not promoting that as the solution. But in terms of thinking about how we can manage downtown circulation, I really like the idea of seeing one-way streets and stop signs as a way of communicating that cars should not rule our downtown, that downtown is a place for pedestrians, residents, commerce. And so, I'm really open to seeing that thinking. That said, I don't think that this application should depend on the resolution of that traffic plan. I do think that the best resolution for the parking issue is for the management of the spaces onsite. the spaces onsite. That's my, my strong belief, is the best way to move forward with this. We talked about the flood issue, I appreciate the changes in the windows. I understand that the owners of the Mill Street Inn did not comment on the windows that are facing towards them, a nod or a shake of the head, staff? No comments from them, so I imagine that they're happy to see the shed removed, and so maybe that's the win for them. Let me just see, I had quite a few notes, I want to be sure I got everything. I also supported the 20, I really like the height. You know, as we move away from Main Street, I like the idea of the heights of the building dropping gradually, and if you look at, you know, the San Benito House, that's a pretty tall building. If you look at the Mill Street Inn, that's a one-story building. And so I appreciate the graduation of heights that are taking place here, and would like, would like to retain that. Let me see here. Oh, a question about the garbage, the garbage shed. So I don't live downtown, the way the, the way the garbage bins are located, do the, do we anticipate that the garbage trucks actually need to enter this area, or are the bins all going to be on the street? The record will show, I'm sorry.
Get a, yeah, a quick response from the applicant here.
Good question. We don't have like, big, huge dumpsters, they're all plastic, and they're all the typical ones you just find in a residence, but I think there's five of them lined up there. So the residents and the office would have to take out the trash to the curb for pickup, and then they have to bring it back, as is often done.
Yeah, thank you, and I want that to be, if that's not a condition, I want to be sure of it. I, I live next to the sand plant, and every morning at dark thirty, a truck comes in, and I'm not talking about the 20-TU with the sludge bins, that's another long story we could talk about, but just the little dumpsters, the, you know, they come run, 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 down the trail and then back into there, and it's an awful lot of noise, and I would be, I think it would be a favor to the residents in downtown, to your upstairs tenants, or you, if you're living there, if they didn't have to do that. So I'd like to be sure that happens. Let's see, we've talked about storms, we've talked about, I think the zero-lot line is fine, I didn't have any concerns at all about that. I like the idea that Rick had about popping out a little bit at the curb. Again, like stop signs, I think it could have ramifications for traffic velocity, that's good. It could have ramifications for traffic volume, that's bad, but that's the trade-off. We talked about construction, material, and parking logistics. I think those are my comments at this time. I appreciate the thought that went into the work that took place, I think it's been informed tonight, this is the way a public hearing should work, so you are all to be commended.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hernandez?
Sir, did you? One other comment that was raised by the applicant, who has the dentist office across the street, was the stairwell that faces south on the exterior of the building, is a minor modification, you know, could the plan include plants or some other type of screening that might, I know, one of my former commissioners is a big fan of New Zealand box trees, because they, they block anything, given a few years, but that's just a concern, if you could take into consideration some kind of additional screening to hide the stairs from across the street. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, I, through the chair. I wanted to, I wasn't sure whether the plants that were proposed were native, I'm imagining they were, yes, the record shows they are.
May I address that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Personally, I like the stair breaking up the mass and stepping back, I think it actually looks picturesque, I'm the designer on that. But we did put a landscape area right adjacent to the stairs, if you look at sheet A 1.1, you'll see it is there, there's a slight break in it, because we have all our, all those ugly water things that you always see, that the surface of the building, we have hidden underneath these stairs. And then additionally, we have another parking strip, planting strip at the curb, and then we also have a tree planted there. And I tried to show that tree on the rendering of that corner, and it's always, how much do you show the tree and not the building? But anyhow, I tried to, so I, I think that we've tried to address those concerns already. I'll look longer, and I'll look into the New Zealand box trees.
Great, thank you very much. My one last request is just, I appreciate the renderings that you've prepared, I think they're, they're really nice and give us a good sense of, of what is, I think, to address some of the questions regarding the windows on the north side of the building, if it'd be possible to get a similar rendering of that side. We've got the south and the, the front elevation here and there, so I don't know if that's a possibility, take a look at that, or?
It's possible, but it's, at this point, the building is no longer 3D modeled.
Okay.
It isn't like I just pull it up.
Sure, no, I understand, you'll just push it back.
As we've pushed around all those walls and pushed them further back, then we've broken out the file, so it is not an easy thing to generate that picture, but I'll see what I can do.
Okay, well, great. So does staff.
So for your motion, we just wanted to offer that you could continue this to a date certain. We have looked at June 11th as an appropriate date, that would give enough time for the applicant to respond to some of your comments, and I do want to run through those. And then we would not re-notice the item, but we want to make sure that everybody here would know about that. We'd probably repost the site, just because we want to make sure folks know. But just, just a couple things, we want to manage expectations on the parking on the, on the Mill Street side, where I think Commissioner Polgar mentioned potentially fitting in another angle, we did check to, we tried to put one there, the backup into the new crosswalk is a conflict. So we did go all around the site, and we've already done a bit of this work, so now we're going to go farther away from the property and look at what can be fit, and just wanted to share that with you. There are always trade-offs in how parking is aligned on a street, ballbots can mess up drainage sometimes. The parallel versus perpendicular versus angle parking all have effects on bicycle riders. So we've been thinking about all these things as we prepared this and worked with the applicant to bring it to you. So we'll go, we will go back through and comment and understand your input. Just also note, we will go back, I, and I, the speaker is right, I didn't know about that stop sign comment, I'm probably the new staffer that you were referring to, among several others, so that is very helpful for this hearing to bring that kind of thing out. We will bring that back to the city engineer. And we would like to work with our applicant on a number of the building performance measures, including noise, trash, and any other architectural changes that kind of came out of this session, so that you can see the details. We need to see the details and run the numbers as well, so we appreciate the continuance, and thank you for considering that. But June, June 11th, is that working?
I don't have my office calendar with me, and I know somewhere there, I'm out of town, so I'll go check. I can get back tomorrow first thing, but I, I don't know for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, Commissioner Polgar's out. Well, we can continue to a date uncertain, we will re-notice the item, I think that's also fine.
Yeah, I think, I know I have vacation that time as well, and so I'll be gone, so I don't, we may have a quorum, but we may not.
I know I'll be here.
So, so with that, it sounds like we can entertain a motion?
I move that we continue this item to a date uncertain, to give staff an opportunity to address the comments from the commission.
And the second?
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. See, that ends our, that ends our, our public hearing items, and moves us into a director's report. It's Jill.
I'm going to give people a moment to clear out. Okay. So your agenda forecast is for May 14th, we believe that Bike Works will be ready for you. There's a very small project at 623 Church Street, involves a garage. I mentioned you'll be seeing general plan consistency for the capital improvement program. I'm also preparing the ordinance for establishing the Architectural Advisory Committee, and would like to bring that to you on May 14th. So we're, we're on track for that. The Hafman Bay High School lights, believe it or not, are going to come your way quite soon, and we're looking forward to bringing that to you. Also note, you, Bridget handed out, we received an email on Saturday regarding accessory dwelling units, and I think she gave you each a hard copy. The commenter, I believe, brought some of this up to you while we were working on this ordinance about a year ago, and the, the gist of this is about requiring an ADU when a large house is proposed. This is not something that was worked into your ADU ordinance, what I would, we just, we thought it was interesting and appropriate for consideration, however, as a comment relative to policy in the local coastal land use plan, so we just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, and we thought it would be of interest, and Bridget's going to respond to the commenter that we received this and that you, you have this copy. So tonight, you saw two downtown projects that, obviously, one of them, we've, we've got more work to do, but we, we would like to bring you some zoning amendments over the summer, and one of them is just to address mixed-use parking. The, the project that you just saw, in most cities' codes, would not have required a parking exception, and it, it's really challenging to get focused and distracted on parking when there's so many other things that are important about getting, getting a project to fit into the context of downtown and provide the kinds of land uses that the council's looking for and that you've been working so hard on. So that's one thing, and this was the one that we promised you, granting a use permit to use a house as a house, I don't know how that made you feel. I did not enjoy having to do that with this really kind applicant. I would like to think that we can come up with a code amendment that will be appropriate. We would not want, under any circumstance, residential on the ground floor of Main Street for what I've heard some people call the four magic blocks, basically, between the bridge and Correa Street. That's, that is your retail, restaurant, ground floor, active visitor-serving, commercial area. Other than that, we, we think there's a lot of flexibility, and we can bring you a code amendment that may simplify that. With your feedback, I, I would suggest that you didn't need to see that first item, and that staff could have taken care of that without a hearing. So just think about that, if you, if you see anything about that that you disagree with, let us know. But that was, that was a pretty minor thing. Okay, then, a couple other things. So for example, this zero-lot line is allowed for mixed-use projects in the commercial downtown, but it's not allowed for single-family, multifamily residential. I don't, I'm not suggesting that it should be, I actually don't, don't like that for those uses, but I also don't think that the R1 standards are really appropriate in the CD zone, because your historic fabric of single-family residential in the downtown never had setbacks like that. So we would like to measure the setbacks that are the character of how Hafman Bay was built out, and we'll, we'll bring some numbers to you, so you can think about those, is in terms of actually holding the line that you, you had, that we think people like. So those are a few things we'll try, we'll get your feedback for sure, and I can imagine there will be a few rounds of what we need to do, we're very open about this. Be working with Sarah Clark in the Shoot Mahaly office, and Sarah and I have a lot of background in this kind of zoning, so we're actually excited about doing this. Couple coming up items, the April 29 training at San Mateo Library, there's going to be a housing focus that evening, I know a few of you are going, I will see you there. And then tomorrow night, Poplar Gateways is going to be a workshop before the Parks and Rec Commission, Brittany is going to be, she's the project manager on that, and she will be presenting, and the consultants will be there as well, that starts at six in the library, six o'clock in the library tomorrow night. And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thanks, Jill. I'm just curious, on the zoning ordinance stuff, and I don't know that you would have a response now, I've been kind of looking into it a bit. You know, I've seen different communities that have regulations on, you know, obviously short-term rentals and how long, you know, Airbnbs and that type of thing. I'm wondering if staff or if council know of communities that have requirements for structures just to be occupied, just to be used as residences, or to be, and I just noticed just a number of, a number of homes on the coast that, you know, particularly those along the coastal trail, sort of front in the ocean, that, you know, I frankly have never really seen anybody at, except for maybe an occasional weekend or something like that, and just with our tight housing stock here, I'm just wondering if there's anything that, that can be done.
I don't think we'll get to that this summer, but we are aware of Vancouver, BC actually has an empty house tax. There's a state legislation being considered for the coastal zone portion of San Diego County, which would have short-term rental regulations that are very interesting to Sarah and me, that we'd like to show to, show you, about emphasizing the use of a property in maintaining it for residential purposes, yet giving some flexibility around using it for short-term rental as well. But there's, it's a different approach than what we presented to you last year in our study session on short-term rentals. So there's, there's a number of things going on with short-term rentals in other towns that we've, we've been paying attention to, as well as what the Coastal Commission has been approving for other jurisdictions.
Great, well, yeah, it kind of gets to the, our item tonight about being able to use houses as houses, you know, some of our things here.
Just a quick, so, great to entertain changes in the zoning ordinance that are minimal, I wonder if there is room on that raft for any other really, you know, sort of cut and dried, we know the facts, we need to modify our zoning ordinance to tell that fact outside of things that are immediately related to that one subject. Yes? Yay? Yay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez?
Those are all exciting things for us to take a look at, always appreciate the effort you guys are putting into this. I will say, Brian, one of the things that we discussed in subcommittee was this tax that Vancouver, BC has about having a tax for homes that are unoccupied. I'm a, I'm a big fan of that. Jimmy's on the record as saying he wants a one-way street on Mill, I'm, I'm going to put myself on a one-way street on Mill. I'm, I'm going to put myself on the record saying an occupancy, like, if people aren't occupying houses, they're just sitting vacant. We should evaluate something to do about that.
I think I said I'm entertaining it. I'm not sure I'm, I'm not ready to run the, to go out there with a can of paint just yet, but.
Okay. Anything else? So, so?
It's okay.
Something you want to share with the group?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with you guys. So, you all know you officially have city email. And I've checked everyone, and it's all, they're all active now. Sorry, sir. We said a little, little sappho, but we fixed everything. So, you officially have them. I'll send out another emails to make sure and confirm that you guys have that. Also, I'm getting instructions sent to me on adding it to a device. So, if you'd like to put it on a device, it'd be easier. I'll send those over to you guys.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
Okay. No, it's okay. We'll work it out.
Very, very good. Okay. Any planning commission communications? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're out.